Let the agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the revival of precious sands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Polley.
President.
Trustee Laffin.
Here.
Clerk Palavich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Kroll.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. Uh, this is the point of the adoption of the agenda. Is there any additions, corrections to the agenda?
Can't make additions.
But I, well, we have a full board. We would be able to, but are there any corrections? And we have a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Moved and supported and for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Uh, this is the first opportunity for public comment. Uh, is there any public comment online? Is there any public, uh, for any of our participants online? Seeing none, uh, we'll move forward to the purpose of the meeting. In your packet, uh, was the response, uh, post the city council's last meeting. And before you is, uh, a draft of all the notes, uh, I believe that came out of a conversation of the committee that included trustee Lapp and trustee Reinhardt. Um, what either of you trustees like to discuss?
I defer to Steve. It hurts. I always jump in and so.
Well, if we're gonna go over the draft or a couple of things that, uh, I thought we should. I didn't see him in here and I wasn't sure if I missed them during our meeting or, or, um, if I just conjured him up in my brain. So no comments at this point.
Um, well, just as a synopsis of, uh, the draft, uh, the primer, I guess that might be the easiest way to do it is, uh, uh, in section two, uh, it was, uh, discussed and changed to, uh, go back to the fifth anniversary, uh, as to the city's proposed third anniversary. Uh, staying in section two and I'll just go from top to bottom. Uh, in, uh, section two, the payment of services, uh, our counter was a cap of four seventy-five. Um, there's also language, uh, following that number, uh, per year absent further negotiation, uh, to be stricken. Uh, as well as the last sentence of that section, uh, to be stricken. All of section three, uh, to be stricken. Uh, moving down into, on page two of six and four B, um, was, uh, the language of or ensure to either be strict or to clarify upon. Uh, third line down, uh, an added language of firefighters will be dispatched to all emergencies. Uh, that was added language, um, further down in the same subsection B, um, was added language of to all emergencies and to strike, uh, fire calls. So that the language remains consistent. Uh, second to the last sentence, uh, is to remove Alpena County. Uh, and leave that, uh, blank as to handled by the appropriate authorities. Continuing down to subsection D and under ambulance service, very much the same in language clarification and, uh, similarity is, uh, to strike or clarify the wording of or ensure. Moving forward to page three of six, um, station staffing five A, uh, language to include and read as such, the city will staff both township stations with city full-time staff assigned to twenty-four hour shifts. And is this one of your parts where so, and that can be added, but in further discussion was, uh, and deputy chief admins could probably, uh, clarify as well. Their twenty-four hour shifts already have two. So we could add it. It just could be potentially redundant.
Sounds redundant. I, I would think that we should make it redundant.
Okay.
So exactly what is it you wanted to say?
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna put down the, the city will staff both township stations with, with two city fired, uh, city full-time staff assigned to twenty-four hour shifts.
So.
So it'd be two full times, city full-time staff at each station.
Correct.
Okay. I can add that language. That was, I figured that was one of your two points of clarification. I'm pretty certain I know the next one too as well. But yeah, so I did, that was not just spelled out because it, but therein, why not be redundant in that part? Uh, moving down, uh, to section six, A, uh, the language was added. Um, uh, city fire shall have unrestricted use of Southside Station and restricted use of Northside Station solely to the emergency use premises. Uh, and then striking said facilities. Um, moving forward.
Can I just ask a question?
By all means.
Why is unrestricted use of Southside, but restricted use of Northside?
Uh, the theory there was that Southside is a standalone fire department. Here it is actually combined with the entire entity in the building.
Township offices.
DPW office.
Okay.
So that was for that clarification. Uh, moving forward, uh, under, uh, six B on page four. Uh, the added language under, uh, subsection B midway through that paragraph was, um, as required by license for clarification.
If, if you look at the, the entire sentence there.
Yeah.
Uh, it says markings slash letterings may be modified to recognize the city operation. When, when we spoke about this ambiguous words like may and are too ambiguous to me. And so, uh, I wanted to strike in, I wanted, I didn't want our, our equipment to have, just to be sort of let it over. But as I understand it, it is an expectation of the licensure that, uh, uh, it says operated by or something like that.
Uh, moving forward, uh, that was the only, uh, change on four of six. Moving forward on to five of six. Um, uh, what was presented was in sequence was A and B. Um, what you have on this is, uh, A and B on their, on the city's proposal have been flip-flop. B is now A because it further defined the latter. Um, so the new A is as such, that was the old B. Um, but on the new B, uh, which was, uh, simply a singular sentence. The parties may mutually agree in writing at any time to terminate this contract in the manner provided in their mutually written agreement. Well, uh, there was, uh, discussed to strike and terminate that sentence as the parties may mutually agree in writing at any time to terminate this contract period.
I guess, why did we strike that? Why wouldn't we want it, them to terminate it in the manner provided by their mutual written agreement?
Then, then, uh, cause that's vague and ambiguous to me.
Okay.
I mean, if we refer specifically to some provision in this agreement, but it's already in this agreement.
Okay.
Which is the termination.
Which will, you'll actually see later in this same, uh, subsection, uh, the last paragraph was added language as to that exact same thing for clarification was to as per section six of this agreement. And then moving forward into, uh, section ten, uh, an added sentence, uh, was included, uh, to state based upon current inventory and to be renewed annually and distributed to both parties.
Should there be renewed or updated?
Could be updated if you would prefer the language from renewed to be changed to updated. That's a simple phrase. Updated.
That makes more sense.
Yeah. Uh, and that was all that was discussed in regards to the draft contract, uh, that went through committee.
There was one other item that, that I wanted to discuss on section, uh, item seven, page four of six, uh, fire task force. We were going to, uh, I guess clarify that after the words, after the word manager, city manager, we were gonna put comma as voting members. I didn't want there to be, even though it's reasonably clear that it wouldn't be, I didn't want there to be three city people and two township people. And so I just wanted to clarify.
And to, to that, um, that was one of the notes. And when I got to it and then started reading as I was inputting all, all of, all the recommended changes, th- that is an advisory board to begin with. And so they don't have a vote. So. But, uh, I mean, I'm open to whatever. I mean, cause that's, that was my thought. That was the only reason that I didn't put in that, that comma as voting members because as whether it would be a committee or a task force, there is really no vote. It's a recommendation.
But on the other hand, if I may.
Yes, my, um.
I, I sort of agree with Steve in a way because for them to make a recommendation, that would require, I would think, a consensus of the committee.
Right.
Uh, and the committee should only consist of those four.
I think so.
I mean, the committee will probably get recommendations from the fire chief.
Right.
But, uh, but then what they, what they decide to recommend to their two boards, I would think would be a board, a vote of that task force.
So I mean, I can, I, that's why I wanted to have this part of the conversation.
And, and that's why I was concerned about that. When I first read that and saw that, uh, some of the language was stricken, that I, I just wanted that, I didn't want there to be the ability to interpret something two or three different ways. That's just gonna create ambiguity. It's gonna create issues. And so it just felt to me that, uh, that there needs to be enough clarity that, that that is a non-issue. And so whether we say as voting members or as, as recommending members or as however we wanna word it, I just want those four people and those four people only to make recommendations or to vote upon something or something. I, I don't want that.
To be lopsided. Yeah. So what would you, the suggestion, uh, because I believe that the, the proposed language was as voting members.
Yes.
Just add that comma after manager, comma, as voting members.
I'm fine with that language. Uh, 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 they are effectively going to take a vote as to what they're going to recommend. So I, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. So then that would be.
Yeah, you had in here, which was, was crushed out, serve as a non-voting member. Either way, if you'd rather say it in the positive, I think your way is fine as opposed to.
Well, and that's what we discussed in committee because that, that language was actually stricken coming back from the city.
Right.
Um, that the fire chief would, that was stricken to serve as a non-voting. And that point of clarification, either we could put that back as that point of clarification or leave that stricken and just add as voting members.
I like the more positive way of approaching it.
So are we in agreement that it would be comma as voting members? That would add the clarification?
So in regards to, uh, page one, section two, payment for services. What does the committee use to determine that model?
You know, uh, I've kind of gotten past that. So this is where I'm coming from. I justify it in terms of, are we getting the same or better? Or the same or less cost? And, uh, so, uh, unfortunately or unfortunately, but I think unfortunately, probably, I, you know, I'm the one that proposed that number originally. So I, I take responsibility for it. And of course, that's what came back as we did that in an open meeting. But to me, it's a contract for services. It has nothing to do with justifying how much it costs the city to provide it. Uh, it has to do with, with more of a focus here and what does it cost us to provide it? So that's kind of where, how I approached it cash and, and thinking that, um, yeah, I mean, there's no evidence other than what we saw in the paper yesterday. Uh, there's no evidence that, uh, there's any additional cost to the city for staffing our two stations. But I don't think that's the issue here for us. Are we getting as good or better coverage? And so far, no one's convinced me that we're not, um, uh, for this, this contract fee. I, I'm used to this in dealing with county contracts. I mean, we, uh, we don't ask vendors to, uh, or what do they call stakeholders or whatever to justify the cost. We just go out and bid, bid that particular function. Uh, I just went through one the other day. Uh, for services that is provided in this case to the prosecutor's office and they also do separate contracts with other departments in the county. And we don't question how they got there. We question who can give us the best or the best benefit or the best cost to us. And, uh, so that's kind of where I approached it from.
Yes, Michelle.
Just to add to Russ's, I agree with Russ. Like we just, um, awarded the bid for the water tower. And we didn't ask the people to justify why they came up with a number. We just went with what was recommended by F and B.
Trustee Polley.
Just back to, uh, this task force for a second. And in reference to voting, you're voting for a recommendation. I think somehow they were really not voting for anything to be done, but it's voting for a recommendation. Does that assume here?
Yeah, no, we, we recognize it. At least I recognize that they wouldn't have any authority to spend money or to make changes to the contract that they are advisory. But they, somewhere along the line will, somebody's gonna make a motion and somebody's gonna say yes to it. And it's gonna go on to its respective, uh, uh, departments. And I didn't want there to be, uh, a lopsided vote.
I understand it, but what I'm saying is that they're, they're voting for a recommendation, not voting for anything.
This fire task force, yes, yeah, yeah, correct.
Well, that's what it, it says.
Yeah.
This group shall act as an advisory role to the department and shall be a liaison with the administration to address administrative and operational issues and both plan for and make recommendations to the city and township regarding purchase of average.
My, my interpretation of that is that if there's a recommendation made, it's gonna go two ways. Council's gonna act on it. We're gonna act on it. Uh, then, then there might be a, uh, what they call in Congress, a conference committee. Uh, you know, some, something to work. I mean, if, if, if we act on it and, but modify it, then that's a new proposal, either back to the committee or back, back to city council. It's not, there's nothing gonna happen until both, both bodies agree on the recommendation.
Yeah. And then we added the clarification, even though that would not be a voting aspect, it clarifies even more that these are the people that make, have those discussions, the force. So. Laura, did you?
Well, that was one thing I wanted to say, but I would like to make another comment. You know, right now, we know, in my opinion, with the current chief and the way things are currently, in my opinion, there's no way to rebuild that way. Changes would have to take place. So right now that is an unknown exactly how that would happen. To compare that to what we have in front of us right now. And I still think we need to, I mean, what would that look like? Because if we, if we do contract with the city, would we ever rebuild our own fire department?
I think we could.
You know, would that happen? Would it not happen?
That's why we build the five years into it, right?
Uh, I'm just throwing these questions out there just to look at both sides of it. And, you know, who could we get to do it? Could we get people? Could, what would that cost? We know this cost, you know, uh, in front of us. Um, I'm just throwing that out there and I would like to, you know.
Well, I think these are, we need to have as much conversation as possible. Uh, and to that, I guess, a rebuttal would be, let's just look at our recent past. We've gone through fifteen applicants, narrowed it down to two. One of which, uh, was offered a, a different position. We're still dealing inherently with the same primary concern that we did when we walked into this in November. How do you find staff? That's, that's not only an Alpena concern. It's not just a Michigan concern. It's a national concern for emergency services. So.
But there needs to be a leader.
Oh, I, I agree. But.
That's the foundation.
That would be the starting.
Getting proper leadership.
Yeah. So.
One of the other things that we had talked about, I guess we didn't really come to an agreement on it. And perhaps we should talk about it at, at this body is on page four of six, item eight, term of term and renewal. I, I must have made myself unclear when I said that I thought that the fifteen years was, was too long a period of time. And I'll clarify what I, what I had meant to say, I guess, was that I looked at it as a opportunity, although we do address it on item nine, termination, uh, that if we entered into this agreement and if another opportunity came along, that, and, and the only real opportunity that I can think of that would come along would be an, an opportunity to have a, a, a fire and EMS type authority that it would be made up of several municipalities, uh, which could include the city. And so, and so if we enter into the terms of this contract, as I would read it, our first opportunity to leave this agreement would be December thirty-first of two thousand thirty-six. And if in three or four years or five years or whatever, there was an opportunity to create a fire authority. And if it was in the best interest of the collective best interest, uh, we wouldn't be able to entertain it until December thirty-first, two thousand thirty-six. And so at the last meeting, I thought I'd said that I would rather see that a shorter period of time. Uh, even though we know that subsequent five years, every time we say, yeah, let's stay in this relationship, it extends out for another five years. And so, so that first extension of five years is, I would understand it, would be in two thousand thirty-six. And so we had had some conversation at this last committee meeting that shortening that, that fifteen years to something that may tie closer to the expiration date of the current millage. But even then, there was a, uh, we, we wouldn't have that crystal wall to know whether or not that was, that, that the fire renewal was gonna take place or not. And so I was, I was just concerned that it was a little bit too long. And perhaps we could have some discussion about it, uh, and, and see whether or not, uh, this, this section needs to be modified or at least suggested modification be made.
With that being said, conversation, discussion.
I guess I have questions about termination. So if we sign the contract and in two years we're like, nah, this is not yet. We can't give our notice then and be out in five more years. We can't, we are committed for fifteen full years.
Yep.
And then at the end of fifteen years, we would give notice that.
Well, we could do it at the end of ten to, to expire.
But we are committed for fifteen.
Yeah, under the present wording.
As I read this.
I guess I, we're changing that wording that at any time we could give a five-year notice.
Well.
And we can change the.
That's, that's.
I mean, that's why we're having, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's sort of baked in to the five-year extension after two thousand thirty-six. The only caveat to that would be item B of, of nine, which if we mutually agree.
Yes.
Yeah. Then we could terminate it much sooner. So to me, the mutual agreement would be that a better mousetrap has come along.
There would be for both.
That would have to be for both entities because it has to be a mutually agreed upon.
And that's, that's what we talked about as to that potential of a bigger scenario. Because if something that were that entertaining, it wouldn't probably just be us. It'd probably also be the city considering that. So.
No doubt.
So that's, that was kind of where we left that was, that's if we're both in agreement there, then it's, it's a moot point.
Right. The only.
What is the benefit of having a fifty-year?
Excuse me?
Then what is the benefit of having the fifty-year? We should talk about that because some people, or proponents of that here. Uh, I don't think I was, but it, it, you know, I got acquiesced to. But what was the benefit of putting it, locking in a fifteen-year contract? Cause we thought we had, there was reasons that was discussed about that.
Yeah, I mean, it, and I think it really, because I think it was the interpretation of yours because I watched the, the meeting again and it was pretty, I mean, you're, yeah, I was like, you wanted a long term. And then we actually took it from twenty and I think we went down to fifteen.
Huh.
So henceforth, my, my somewhat slight confusion.
Well, then, then I, then I'm, uh, then I must have confused myself on the first meeting, but I, I'm just.
So then how, how, how would, how would we wanna look at that language and make sure that?
I don't, I guess I don't have, I guess I don't necessarily have an issue with splitting it. So we know we'd have these five-year incremental things. We know that. And so, so if we, if we said, if, if, if five is too short and if fifteen is too long, then maybe we ought to look at something like a seven-year initial term. And then like, like Russ had said, or any, somebody had said that if, if it, if things are not going the way we hoped it to go, to, to give our notice, to know that we have X number of years to, uh, to plan ahead. And so I, I, I just.
Or what if you were to do a five-year with a five-year out? So after five years, there you can notice and then figure it out if you have a ten-year.
So.
Well, you wouldn't have to be, it could be six. I mean, if we, after a year of experience thought, oh, oh, you know, big mistake.
That's where I'm headed.
Then, then you give notice and, and if it's after the five-year, anytime, if we have five years then to be rebuilt or join something else, uh, whatever might come along. But, you know, I'm kind of with you on that. Five or seven, uh, you know, because at about the seventh year, I think we've got eight years on the current millage. And so along about the seventh year, we have to propose a millage. And we can propose it closer to where it's at if this contract works out. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm sure it'll have to increase or something like to change, but, but the, uh, but it wouldn't have to change like I think it needs to change if we are rebuilding a fire department. if we are rebuilding a fire department. Because I don't think we really can realistically do it for the number we were budgeting for this year. I think we have to do more, and I think then we have to have voters convinced that that's what we should do, number one. And number two, that they're willing to pay more for that. And, uh, and I think that's more than double the current village. So, uh, yeah, but, uh, anyway, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm kind of with you on that.
So, I like the five years too. Five years is a long time. I mean, fifteen, ten and fifteen years are even longer.
I, I just don't like the idea of waiting, like, in two years, we find, oh, this is not working. We have to wait five years to even tell them that we want out?
Right.
Why wouldn't we be able to tell them immediately, not working out, not happy, here's our five-year notice?
And the other thing into that too is.
I, I would feel more comfortable with that.
There's a lot.
Apparently, that's what I was trying to see.
You hit the T-box and you ended up on somebody else's.
Yeah, yeah, I should.
Just don't break my window.
Thank you very much. I need all the help I can get.
So, could I make a motion then that we, we consider that changed?
Well, and it wouldn't take a motion, right now, this is just a draft. I want to make sure that we, as a governing body, are sound before I make, obviously, the two slight.
Do you just want consensus?
That's all we'd really need, but I would like to make sure that.
I would like to have, uh, uh, Ms. Gordon or whatever her name is.
Ms. Mills?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Lizzie throws.
And so, that's, I'm, yeah, I would definitely, she's looked at everything thus far, she's.
So she has looked at the changes that the committee.
Did she have any heartburn with any of those things? Okay, good.
No, uh, no, not really at all. I, I was on the phone with her, uh, emailing back and forth until about nine, ten o'clock last night.
Okay.
Um, nothing that was, uh, pumped the brakes, uh, and she, we kind of wrote and looked at the original term based on our miscommunication of fifteen years. So, um, so I'm looking at the language of what would be the new A of the, the term on section eleven, I do believe, on five of six. In term, or actually, eight, so term and renewal. Uh, the initial term of this agreement shall be, what is the consensus? At least it was on five breaks.
It was.
So. Or, so we have eight years on the village. We have, realistically, Russ hit it on the head. It, it, anytime you're looking at a village renewal, you should always look at least a solid year out to prepare for that, to get all your data in, in position to make your proper request for funding.
Right.
We have a five-year, I think we're all in agreement to, or a, a renewable five-year. That part wasn't the issue, it's the original term, correct?
Correct.
I guess I'm not sure what you're saying.
The original term of fifteen, we're looking, that's what I'm saying, to reduce. Because everybody's good with the five-year renewal language.
Yes, we're gonna need five years.
Yeah, because that's, it would take five years if we opt out.
Do, do you understand?
Would you, I mean, am I?
Yeah, I'm understanding.
Okay, okay. Because it is a, it is a, it is a, uh, protracted period of time that we would otherwise, in our normal lives, we would never enter into an agreement that said, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll discontinue my babysitting service with you, but it's gonna take five years.
Right.
You know, so, so we would, which, it's important to understand, you know, that this is a totally different kind of animal, that it will take several years just to become mobile through, through whatever process we're gonna do.
If you reduce it to five years, they give you three years prior to the village. And then at any point after that, you could opt out with the five years.
Anytime before that.
And, and, and during.
Mutually agreed upon.
Yeah.
You always have that.
No, no, we can give the notice as long as it's beyond the fifth year. So after the first year, this, that's the way I'd like to see it. So if we give notice after one year. If we, if we give notice after one year, hey, this is not working.
Okay.
Then, that means we have five years from that point, it'll be the sixth year.
That we'd be.
Contract, and we'd be out if, you know, somebody comes with a new loaf of bread, you know, or.
And on the other hand, if it, if it, if everything is going great, then it's just an automatic five-year renewal. It's not automatic, we just basically take a vote on it. And, and the city says yes, township says yes, we move on for another five years.
So.
And it would give them like the out too. If we're like, yeah, done with those people, they can tell us that we want out.
With that, with that being said, um, I, I, I'm hearing some swing towards Russ's verbalization.
I think we're talking about five years, right?
So.
Yeah, a five-year term.
Five-year term.
With the ability to give notice at any time, five-year notice that we want, yeah.
Everything will be five.
So then, eight, we're reducing fifteen to five.
Right. And then the date.
The dates will all change.
Say after a year. Yeah, we don't like.
Five-year term, or one year into the five-year term, we don't think things are working out. Then we give a five-year notice that we're gonna.
Yeah.
We give the notice under the terms at least, you know.
So that terminology has to be put in.
And I'm gonna have Lizzie.
Yeah.
Draft, yeah, she'll, she'll hit it on the head. So, I just want, uh, uh, my understanding, so when I send an email with this correction, it is of the understanding that as an out, so it actually fall in subsection A, is that where the language should go?
Yeah.
Okay.
In, in fact, if, if Lizzie wanted to, to clarify, because we've spent a fair amount of time talking about this right now.
Yeah.
She may wish to cite an example.
I could probably, because that was the last part of our communication last night, she said, should I be available for the meeting? I said, maybe, but maybe not, and don't make any massive plans. So she, so she is available by phone if you would like to.
I don't think it's necessary. I think that she could, I think she could literally.
The, the.
italicized an example.
Okay, so, so we want in section A, if one of the parties provides written note, I just want to make sure that when I convey this, it's to what our understanding is at this table. That if either party may provide a written notice of termination of this contract to the other party. And then it goes into, if one of the parties provides such written notice, then this contract shall terminate on the next fifth anniversary. That is at least five years after the date of the written notice. So that language actually holds true to the, but we want the ability to opt out by written means.
I don't think it's terminated on the anniversary, I think it's just terminate five years from the notice.
Right.
So termination, I'll just let her.
That's how I would understand it. But if we were two years into it, then it's gonna rotate out five years, not three.
From notice.
Right.
Yeah.
So basically, this termination would be from the, the notice date.
No matter when you say you want to terminate.
Yeah, terminations from notice date. Five years, yes, Laura.
The, it wouldn't necessarily have to be mutually agreed upon.
That would.
No.
No.
No, not this.
That's a unilateral.
Yeah.
For you to.
Are there any, is there any other discussion or, uh, because I want to make sure that we're, we're not fifteen years down the road and on the wrong page.
The mutual agreement, Laura, could be.
Why are you looking at me?
Because you're looking at me.
You know, I mean, but that would be a modification.
Yeah.
So we're like, still looking at four hundred thousand, we're looking at, the rate would be unchanged until the fifth year.
Fifth anniversary.
The fifth anniversary.
Which right now would be the term of the contract, so that's gonna slide accordingly. Followed by our counterproposal, it'd stay constant, yes, but. Are there any other?
What about the cap?
Four seventy-five.
Cap was four seventy-five.
Instead of five hundred thousand.
That's our counter.
That's, yeah. Seeing no further discussion, I guess I'd entertain a motion to present, uh, this draft with, uh, the amendments discussed at this table ought to be corrected by Lizzie to be, uh, sent to representatives of the city.
Make that motion.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Clerk Klavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
No.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Okay, I will, as soon as Lizzie makes those corrections, I will have her email the entire board, uh, corrected with that language. Uh, moving to the next item of business is the finalization of the date and location for the public input sessions. Uh, following our, our last meeting, trustee, uh, Reiner went to the Apex, uh, and looked at the room availability for both the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Uh, it would be available, uh, with the unfortunate caveat is that we wouldn't have the ability to maintain our online presence for it. Uh, with that being, uh, I think a curbing aspect, uh, my, my recommendation is that we host it here, uh, at the township offices on the twenty-fourth at six P M.
How many people can we have with current guidelines?
Uh, I think we're up to, with social distancing, uh, we're twice the normal capacity, so then we're at thirty-four.
But that's not including like.
Not, no other rooms, just this room. So then we have lobbies, if we want, if we need to cycle people through to make comments, then we'll accommodate accordingly.
And we'd have Zoom.
And we have, so.
Right, and we would lose the Zoom if we do it at the Apex.
Yeah.
I think so.
And I think that's important to have the Zoom.
Yeah, the logistics, I guess, I mean, they have a screen like this, but.
Then we gotta provide, it would just be.
It'd be costly to have our key people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that is, I think we all learned that at the chamber dinner as well, depending on where you're sitting.
Most people bring their own in, yeah.
Um, yes, Laura.
So, just so we understand, the, so we're gonna have like a question and answer session. So people would come up here on Zoom, ask their question. I mean, how much time do those people have? And then are you going to be the one to like answer the questions or any of us?
I, I, I think at this point, we should all be well-versed enough to where if a question is directed to one person or another, we could answer it. Um, and I also think, uh, we'll have to look at, uh, some of the questions may have to lean on, um, the expertise of, of fire staff. Um, so, that would be, I think, the best way. Uh, I think that, from my standpoint, if we're giving, uh, doing a Q and A, uh, which I think we're all in agreement to there, um, because public comment is unfortunately just one-sided. Um, I would like to, especially if it's, it, it's, tends to be a topic that's, uh, misrepresented, the ability to clarify and educate. Um, currently, right now, our, our meeting, uh, allows for three minutes in public comment. Is that sufficient enough time? Because we can clarify and quantify what the settings will be. My thought was, um, five minutes, one time. And we can answer questions, educate, but I'm open to.
But I think if you're actually talking about having an actual dialogue, you probably would want to keep it short, but.
Yeah.
One topic may lead into another, and, you know, so it may, it may get a little bit longer, but I don't want to cut people off.
Well, and that's, that's why I figured up to five minutes gives a couple additional minutes. And really, I think with, uh, the questions or concerns, we, I'm, that's why I'm asking. Because I don't want anybody to feel that we didn't give enough, but at the same time, I want to keep it fairly concise and keep things moving in a, in a direction.
Who would be in this?
Uh, well, it'd be our.
I'm in the public, I mean.
Our board, uh, and potentially, uh, Dave Robbins, Bill Forbush, and maybe, uh, Deputy Chief Edmonds. I'm.
I mean, I think if somebody comes up and they, like, somebody said, touch on one topic, you know, and like that shouldn't be their only chance to speak. And then if another topic ends up coming up and that same person wants to get up and up again.
And I, I think we're, I think we're gonna have to play it by ear because of that exact same thing. And so, I mean, yeah, if there's a, a, a valid point, then, well, we should always afford somebody to have.
Who determines what's a valid point, though?
Well, and that's why we're discussing it now, because one.
May catch the sergeant.
There you go.
I think.
I don't want anybody to feel cut off.
Timeline, uh, no, excuse me, are we gonna cap the meeting?
I, I think you, I think you have to have.
Like it, how long we're going to take.
Yeah, I think that if you don't cap a meeting.
So what, so let, let's discuss the cap, because then we can work back to, depending on what the population that does attend, we can actually kind of, so what would a, an agreeable cap of time? Two hours?
Three hours. Going to seven or six?
We're starting at.
Starting at.
I would see three hours would be the max for any.
Three.
And we, I think we need to make sure that everybody gets a chance that wants to ask a question.
By all means.
Or make a statement. And so, I think we don't allow repeaters until we give everybody else that's there an opportunity.
Yeah, and that's how I look at, but yes, Laura.
And the agenda, it says finalized date and location of public input sessions.
Oh, that, that, that was great.
We're only having.
That's a type, that's a type error.
We're having one.
Just for clarification.
Yep.
And do we need to have the response from the city before we have public input?
I think we're, we're, we afford the, the, well, the city meets on the twenty-first.
Okay.
Um, I would imagine in three days' time, we would probably have uh, an inkling of what, uh, the response from city council.
Well, what if we have input from the public that we take and may want to make another modification or go back? So I think, uh, it's not really dependent on.
I don't think it is either, I think, I, I think we afford, we afford this opportunity. Um, and I, I'm hoping that, uh, facts and legitimate questions and concerns come to us. And may, that may actually give us the opportunity to see something that maybe we missed. That's what we can always hope. But, so, I, I, what I'm hearing is, uh, twenty-fourth, six P M, here, six to nine P M. Allow everybody to speak, um, go through first before duplication. Obviously, very similar to the November, uh, if it's gonna be the same question that's been answered over and over, it's been answered. There's no sense in, you know, beating that dead horse if it's already been answered and seven other people. So we'll keep that moving, but I think it'll just have to be a, a scenario. So, should we leave it at three minutes for the first round? And then say, upon everybody's. Well, five's a lot of time. I say, let's, let's keep it at three, and if, if time permits, then we'll allow.
Five minutes, everybody takes five minutes, that's like twelve people an hour. It would only be allow thirty-six people to speak, and I, we don't know how many people are gonna be.
So let's leave it at three minutes, three hours.
I'm gonna try to structure this room a little differently.
I will, will have to.
Do we have to maintain this distance? I mean, could we all be at the board again? When can that happen?
Soon as Myosha says that we can.
Oh, okay, so we can't do it now, okay, I've often wondered.
We could move up. I was gonna move us out of the parking lot.
Sunny, sunny day, yeah. Sunset in the township, so. Do I ha, do I have any other concerns as to the twenty-fourth, six to nine P M? Three-minute limitation per individual. That does fall on a Thursday, correct?
Would you like to request from the public questions ahead of time?
If they would like to submit.
I was gonna suggest the same thing.
To have them submit.
Questions may be submitted to the clerk.
Sure. Love it.
That, that might not.
Did you get that?
No, that's fine, that's great.
Steve, guy, what questions may be sent to the clerk?
Well, there you go.
No, I only work part-time.
Yeah. She's a part-timer. So, are we in, in agreement there? Twenty-fourth, six to nine P M, and it's a Q and A, it isn't just an emotional dump. This is, by all means, bring us, your, your questions or concerns.
Ideally, that would. Ideally, that would be great.
Ideally, it's, it still may be.
No doubt that we will have a motion and, and that's fine. And, but I would. We should probably be a little bit. Maybe liberal on some of that.
I think we have to.
A lot of control when you say.
Yeah, no, I, I think I can maintain a meeting fairly well. So I think I'll, I'll just do it a case by case. I just wanted the general parameters to be agreed upon.
We need to be functional, flexible.
That's a perfect term.
Rigidly flexible.
Sometimes you gotta optimize your customer acquisition.
Wow.
He wrote it off the whiteboard.
I don't recall. So anyways, with that being said, uh, June twenty fourth, six to nine P M. Three minutes per individual. Uh, we can always address that on duplicity as time permits. And questions and comments can be sent.
They can be sent or emailed to the clerk's office.
My office and whoever, just make sure that they get to us if they do send them. So.
If any one of us gets one, we're good.
Right.
Yeah, just forward on. Yeah.
Right.
Um. I, I guess I'll just simply entertain a motion to approve the public input session special, well, it'd have to be a special meeting, given it's a. Quorum of our board. We have a motion to approve the public input session on the twenty fourth, six to nine, motion and support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in, well, actually roll call, because we'll have a cost.
Treasurer Ellery Summers, trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward to the second opportunity for public comment, is there anybody online that has public comment? If so, please raise your hand or let us know by text that you have a comment. Again, this is the second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone online, please raise your hand on the bottom taskbar. Seeing and hearing none, uh, further discussion by the board?
I just have, um, during the public input, if people have emailed me questions or comments, I will, I will bring them all here. Are we going to read them?
I think we, we afford every opportunity for people's concerns to be addressed. Yeah, if they're not, if not, they're not present, then it's our, our duty to give them a proper response.
If there's redundancy in those questions, we can bundle it together.
Organize them.
So. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have motion to adjourn, and it's been supported. Further discussion? Seeing.
Norm supported.
Norm supported. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose the same, meaning adjourned at eleven fifty four. Wow.